This meeting to order, this is. Our Thursday August 10th meeting, thanks to the board members for rearranging the schedules for making this happen. And to begin with, we will entertain motions.
I have a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose discussions regarding proposed, pending, or current litigation. Collective negotiations pursuant to Article fourteen of the Civil Service Law. And matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation.
Second by Karen, second by Jill, any discussion of question? All in favor? Passed unanimously, we do anticipate a full executive session, so we're back close to seven. We'll let folks know.
Okay.
Great. We will continue on with our agenda, which includes any modifications of the agenda. Hearing none will continue on to Agenda Item four point one. With a presentation about another trip to Morocco. We welcome to listen here, folks, thank you.
I swear, go in this time.
Wait a second for the slides. So we are back to request permission for. This year's Morocco trip, we are, our plan is to go again in February. And there's a few things that are new and shifting a little bit that we wanted to share with you tonight. And then just go over sort of the basics of the plan and the budget and all that sort of thing. I was wondering about that too. So this year, well, we plan to again fly into Casablanca. But we're instead of going north, which is what we did last year. We plan to do the southern route this year. And the, we'll be heading to the city of Beni Malal, which is where there's a high school that we have worked with in the past. And that we are hoping to meet up with again. We are hoping to do home stays this year, so we'll see if we can set that up last year was. Not possible still sort of like residual COVID concerns, I think that the families in the school had so. And then we'll go to Marrakech, we get to go out into the desert, which will be really fun and then head to the coast there. So that's sort of the, the general plan right now, an itinerary.
So some of this information is probably familiar to you by now, we've had several iterations of this presentation. A little bit about Morocco, it's a very diverse nation. Primarily Arab and Berber Islam is the predominant religion, although there's also a large Jewish population. The common languages there Arabic, Darija, that's like the local dialect. Berber, French, English, and Spanish are all widely spoken, so if the students have French or Spanish as. You know, one of their languages, they often have a chance to practice that in the market. And we run workshops before we leave so that students have some background information. On language, religion, and culture, we do language workshops and we try to invite. People to come in and present about Moroccan religion and culture. We have been going to Morocco since two thousand eighteen, I think was the first Morocco trip. And we had a small break there because COVID prevented international travel for a couple of years. But we're really hoping to continue our partnerships there. With a new, a new group of students. So we aim to partner with a Moroccan school so that our students have the chance to interact. Directly with students of their own age and to have real experiences with those students. The home stays are a big piece of that, but even if we don't manage to do the home stays, they still get to visit a Moroccan school, they get to go to some classes, they get to. Interact and have. You do different things with the students and a lot of the. Students who've gone in the past have reported that they've made lasting friendships and have and still continue to speak to Moroccan students long after they return. And that is our goal, our primary goal is to develop real and meaningful relationships that help bridge the gap between cultures. And to build better understanding about people from different places, people with different religions. And in part to help combat stereotypes about Muslims that continue to dominate certain parts of American media. America's relationship with the Middle East has always been a little bit complicated. And so we believe that the strongest path towards. About our future is better understanding one another.
Um, so we are aware that this is an expensive trip and we last year and continue to expand this year. Are looking for ways to help support students in, in making this happen. The estimated cost would be two thousand two hundred dollars per student. We do fundraising throughout the fall in a variety of different ways, our biggest fundraiser is leaf raking, believe it or not, and people are really gentle with the. Donations that they give us when we come and, and rake their lawns. And so it actually, it's a lot of work. But it's also this really lovely bonding that happens at that time, like most of the students last year I didn't know yet. And I got to know them through raking with them and so that actually it's, it's a twofold process and that. That goes into a pool to lower the cost for all of the students. Um, in last, for last year, we received a grant from I P E I and will apply for, for again this year of one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Our goal this year is to start connecting and seeking sponsorships either through organizations or businesses. So one of the collaborations that we started this year is with G I A C and. Many of you know Leslyn and who's the director of G I A C and her daughter went on the trip last year and actually came and was one of the people to present. And she and I had a conversation about working with G I A C to. You know, they, they participated in our fundraising efforts last year and to also work with them. To identify students who might not see the go to Morocco poster and think, hey, I can do that. And they're going to help support those students. Through their team program to go and get their passports and those kinds of things. So we're starting this collaboration, which I'm, we're really excited about. We did have a couple of students go last year who had never traveled internationally before and. That was the highlight of the trip for me is watching them just their whole experience expand, it was phenomenal. So we'd really like to do more of that with this trip for sure. Um, we will be offering full for some students and partial scholarships to meet students requesting financial needs, so we were able to do that last year.
We talked a little bit about the opportunity for home stays, again, we certainly haven't finalized this piece yet. But if we are able to pull that together, we would really like to. And what we do is we put two or three of our students in a home with one of the Moroccan students and their families. And those families are chosen embedded by the school directors in Morocco. Um, and what we do it that way so that none of our students are completely isolated, like they still have. You know, people that they know and are comfortable with, with them at all times. So that, you know, we can maximize the student's comfort. And I think that the home stays really introduce a piece of authenticity that is sometimes lost when you're traveling with a large group of American students. In a foreign country, because it allows them to see daily life, you know, what it's actually like to live and be in another place and to, you know. Actually spend time with these families. So I'm really hopeful that we'll be able to put that piece together. Again, COVID was a bit of a concern last year, but perhaps we will be able to overcome that barrier this year.
And the school that we're visiting that we'll be partnering with this year will be, is a school that we've done that within the past, so that might make it a little easier to set that up. So all the students have to be vaccinated before traveling and have the records for that. Our nurses were phenomenal helping us sort through all of that paperwork last year. The COVID vaccination rate in Morocco is higher than that of the US. We will have a plan in place in the event that a student or chaperone becomes ill while traveling. We did have an issue last year where we had two students test positive for COVID right before the trip. And were unable to go and that was just frustrating and devastating. I don't know what the COVID policies will be for the school district this year, so we'll be working with Paribor with that. To clarify that. But if somebody does become ill, we always have a, a, a plan to, while we're there. We always have a plan to make sure that they can be quarantined and there will be a chaperone that will stay in the room right next door and that sort of thing, so. Unfortunately, people did stay healthy on the trip this past year. Tourism is one of Morocco's largest industries, so people are very welcoming, we felt. Very welcomed and people were, were, were curious and interested and. The, the interactions were really overall pretty positive. Students will be supervised at all times and partnered with a professional trip coordinator in Morocco Rashid, who is phenomenal. His, his phrase is no problem, no matter what happens, no matter what we ask, he just handles it, it's phenomenal, like I. Liz assured me that that would be the case before we went and I was like, yeah, but I haven't met this guy. And as soon as I met him, I was like, okay, he, he really does handle things, he has. Tons of experience, connections and anything the kids, students were curious about, he set it up like so, it was really quite extraordinary. And he fed us ridiculous amounts of food. So he really manages all of the logistics and it's just so helpful that I can then, that the staff, we were really able to focus on the students and their experience and making sure that they were getting the most out of it. So that was really phenomenal.
Hi, so just to wrap up some of the things that students would get to do as part of this experience, they'll get to visit a variety of different mosques. They'll attend a local high school, we have guided visits to the Medina, the older parts of several different Moroccan cities, including Marrakech. And the markets of Marrakech are famous for a really good reason. Right, there are so many things for them to see and experience in the markets of Marrakech. They'll need like eight extra sets of eyes. They'll get to go to the beach, we will get to go on a camel ride in Sahara, the students always really look forward to that one. The Sahara is breathtaking, just the sand students have to be seen to be fully appreciated. They'll enjoy a lot of local cuisine and tea ceremonies, they will all come back talking to you about the food. And they'll hear traditional music, so. They'll have a wonderful experience, we're really hoping that they will have a chance to come back and share it with you. That's it, that's all I have. Happy to field any questions that you have.
So this will be the third. This will be the third Moroccan trip.
Yeah, so.
Started in two thousand eighteen.
Yeah, there were three that happened before COVID.
Yeah.
Then last year's and then this would be the fifth.
Maybe it was two thousand seventeen, I don't remember, but this is the fifth one, I believe.
And are you having any, any return students or students, okay?
No, we have students who were juniors last year who would be seniors this year who like, please, can we go again, we could be like extra helpful.
Like it really is not fair for that to be the case.
Oh, I have one last question, how many hours prep work for the students, do they do before?
A lot, so we have one meeting per month that is mandatory that they're required to attend and those meetings. Include like informational pieces, logistical details, but they also are educational. So we want to make sure the students have appropriate preparation and background before we go in. They have to attend three workshops, language, culture, and religion. And then there's a mandatory, like the students have to put in a certain number of fundraising hours. In order to support the like trips fundraising goals of making it equitable and accessible to everyone. So the students all contribute to that goal. And they can sign up for different activities, like different things that they want to do to help. So that part is also like a requirement. And then have like two parent meetings that the students don't have to attend, but the parents usually, we get as many parents as we can to those meetings. Am I forgetting anything?
No, I think that's about right, so I'm not sure how many hours that adds up to specifically, but it gives you a sense for.
Okay, thank you, because I was looking at prep work, which you did define, especially for cultural preparation. Thank you.
Adam, you had a question?
I think there was that answer.
Questions from other board members?
How many students get to participate, usually twenty-four, twenty-four, okay. And then I guess I'm just curious as to. How do students find out about it and how do they kind of opt in?
Yeah.
Um, so we do, the students who went on the trip last year. At the end of the year last year, they went into different classes, sophomore and junior classes in English and social studies. And talked about the trips with their classmates and gave a presentation about the trip, both to share their experience and encourage people to apply. And then we also, I mean, we put out posters and we put it up on the announcements and on candidates. And we are working with several partners, including G I A C to try to get students to apply and not otherwise apply. So we're working really hard to try to increase our applicant pool and get as many students from different, you know, like communities as possible to, to sign up. The application process happens in the spring. And then it is. The application process is not in any way associated with academic or like academic achievement, instead we're looking for students. Who are adaptable and looking for new experiences, who are open to new experiences and who. We think will be. Who we think will be able to keep an open mind and open heart in new circumstances. So looking for community involvement, community engagement, things like that.
You advertise on like these posters that scholarships are available, will help you get your passport, kind of maybe. Yeah, and it's in the announcements that we do and on the canvas announcement and that kind of thing. But, but I do think it's a challenge, right, I mean, that is. I, I think there are some students who see, oh, trip to Morocco and think I can do that, and there's some students who see that and think I can't do that, which is why these partners, community partnerships are so important. Because they can, they, they know student, the students very well and can say, hey, I think you'd be great for this. And I think that this would be a great experience for you and you can handle it and we're going to help support you and they'll help support you and there's fundraising and funds available for this and so. You can do this kind of thing, I think that's a really important thing from somebody that, that, that they know and trust, yeah.
I think the partnership for Dr. Leslyn at G I A C is phenomenal and Vera is probably the greatest ambassador you can have in place. And I would probably ask to send it to board members because of our networks with young.
Oh, good idea.
As well.
Yeah.
So working with the village, south side.
Yeah.
I know G I A C is going to support as much as they can, so.
That's a really good idea.
What we heard last year and the years before, it is, as we know, it's a life changing experience. If there's no other questions from board members, we can entertain motions. International travel has to be approved by the board for new board members.
And is this the only study abroad that happens nearly, no, no, no.
We had a presentation about a proposed trip first time to Vietnam. For many, many years, there's been, I mean, decades actually. And exchange trip to England, there's a trip to Germany, there's trips to France and Spain or French or. But the Spanish speaking countries, so.
But they need to be approved yearly.
Yes.
Yeah.
Doesn't A F, doesn't L A C S go to South America also?
Sometimes, I mean, they, they have, they go to a Spanish speaking country and they alternate. Uh, one year it's French trip, one year it's a Spanish trip and, you know.
And we have good folks here early so they can start to work differently as possible. And that's why we're on the agenda for tonight.
So I will move to approve the international field trip to Morocco from February sixteenth to February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, as recommended by the superintendent.
Second, moved by Morris, second by Adam, any other discussion or questions? All in favor? It is unanimous, we look forward to the presentation.
Thank you.
I'm going to Morocco in about six weeks, so I will email you for the absolutely must things I must do. Ludi Augustine, Social Studies, Liz Campbell. Oh, that's right, I forgot, she used to be Liz Campbell. But Liz Crawford and who teaches English.
My apologies when I asked you to introduce yourself.
That is what I probably should have done at the beginning.
But thank you. Next on our agenda is public comment. We have anyone who has signed up? We have no one who's signed up, so that means there should not be any board responses. We kept student reps on here as just a placeholder to remind us that when our students are back in the fall that they will be joining our board meetings and speaking as well. We will next go to the consent agenda and we'll entertain motions and then discussion.
Okay, moving things along. Motion to move for approval, all consent agenda items listed in consent agenda, consideration of accounts, personnel reports, students in minutes of previous meetings as presented.
Moved by Morris, seconded by Jill. Questions, discussion?
Even additional personnel report that we're voting on next week?
Yes, and we will have another one the following week and probably another one the following week. This is a busy time of year, of course. So just for folks at home, we are working through some memorandum of understanding or agreements with our unions. We will be appointing a deputy district clerk to provide some assistance, which I hope folks found during this past election went exceptionally well. It was amazing. So thank you, Tricia, and to Emily. And then the appointment of the fine and performing arts data coordinator. That's what the F space A P A stands for. And then that also includes the, oh, we should add this. Also on the consent agenda is the resolution to approve a corrective action plan for a single audit item that involved our school lunch program. I mean, can we just have you provide a quick update on that for folks?
Going to wear different shoes.
Hi, everyone. So this was included in our audit report. It was the first year that was included in the larger audit report. We used to get it actually separately from that. In the audit report, there is a response, but there was a new step that you actually have to adopt it by the board. And so we were told that we wanted to bring that to you today. As you noticed, the dates were from the prior year's audit in twenty-two. That moment that they're talking about was actually related to food service, right? The single audit actually does a deeper dive in a particular area of our operations. It happened to be food service that year. We knew we had more fund balance for the program for what was required. And so we had a plan to purchase equipment and to support the operations of the kitchen. And so that was part of our plan. We've actually done accordingly. It was accepted in the audit document, but this is just one additional step.
And I know there's also another item here about surplus. And I know that Dr. Brian and I have been having some conversations and some board members may have received emails from community members asking about our surplus process. And I don't know if anyone is prepared to speak to make sure that we are, something that we're reviewing as we speak. Is that correct, Dr. Brown?
Like if I want to buy the trailer, surplus trailer.
They may go to auction. Yeah.
I get, who cares? I guess it's got so much thought.
So thank, thanks, everybody. Yeah, so there's a lot of pathways for defining, for finding out whether we need to bring items for surplus. In our policy right now in sixty-nine, ten, it talks about large property items and this would be chairs, desks. It says machines, equipment, but it has, it has to be it has to be in good repair. It cannot be damaged or broken. And if it's a large property item, that's the language the policy uses. We will, it can be auctioned. Now, in the past few weeks, I've met with the communication team and we're working on a plan to have regular auctions through, we've done, over COVID, we use Facebook Marketplace. The bus garage uses an outside auction source, but working with communication team, we'd like to set up a regular auction events through Facebook Marketplace. I I'd also like to say that we work with in terms of, in terms of desks recently, we have, thanks to Amanda Verba in a partnership with T S D Bosse's, we have worked on an exchange and they have purchased some of our items for a certain value. Okay, in our policy sixty-nine, ten, it also talks about small property items and these are books or pamphlets. So it's like education, educational materials. And I'm working with the communication team and facilities to figure out how we can set up times to offload old or no longer use education materials to our community. And then the third part of this is how we do, how we define if an item, what do we do if an item is broken or damaged? Because that's come up as well. So what we do is, and we're going to work on communication to all of our custodians through the communication team and a flyer and a flow chart. But if they think an item is broken or damaged, they can reach out to Heather Williams or Sean Ward. Sean Ward is our number two person in facilities for approval first. And if it is broken, we put it on a facility spreadsheet and then we we add it to the board report. We also, you know, we do, we are starting to do a lot more of scrap metal with metal items. And so that's that's recycling and then we do get some funds back for that as well. So that's another positive there. But I I think you know, the biggest thing we're working on is better communication and better communication and better education of our staff on when to make these decisions, when to call your supervisor, but then also setting up regular and consistent times when we are setting up auctions through Facebook Marketplace.
And you you mentioned scrap metal, which you can actually sell.
Yeah.
Get some money. But other things that are recyclable, is there, you know, an effort to make sure that anything that is recyclable gets recycled?
There, there is. I mean, I guess it depends on on what you're talking about. There's a large range of things that can be recyclable. We just had some early conversations about wood and we were talking to very informal conversations about what to do with some of our older wood items and how to get rid of them in a, in a more sustainable way, reclaiming, reclaiming the light.
Yeah, that sounds like a topic for an advisory council. Additional questions that folks may have?
Okay.
Thank you, Dan.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
Any additional questions or comments about the consent agenda? Hearing none, we will call the question all in favor of the consent agenda. That passes unanimously. Thank everybody. We will continue with our agenda. And it brings us to Dr. Brown, the superintendent's report.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity to share, Professor. My comments tonight will be around the theme of thanking folks and recognizing folks who've been visiting with us. Now, again, whenever there's someone who's visiting with us from the Commonwealth of Virginia, you know, I want to shout them out. So, uh, first, uh, thank you, Jenna, for being here tonight with us and thank you for your engagement in the meeting this evening. And thank you for your support, Mr. Blaylock, who, this is going to be the first of many, many meetings he's going to be in in a long time. So, uh, thank you for your support. And if you didn't know, Garrett's mom is in the audience tonight. And all the way from the Commonwealth of Virginia, I appreciate you. Route eighty-one is a long ride, so thank you. Also, a shout out to Dr. Tripp, Ms. Lane, Mr. Harris, and all the folks who have been supportive of us in attended commission on diversity and inclusivity in our summer symposium. This past week, we had about four hundred educators from all over our state and Vermont visit here. Over thirty-five different school districts. We have, we proudly and boldly say we have the best summer professional development in the nation. And people who come here say that. They keep coming back and it keeps getting bigger. This year, we had Yolanda Seeley Ruiz come back as a keynote speaker, Dr. Monique Kufson was here as well, and Joe Feldman. All three of those keynote speakers, people are lucky if they can get them on a virtual call. We had them all here in person. And a significant number of our educators were here as well. So it's just a wonderful week, professional development. We have some, some of our amazing students, provided a afternoon keynote slash panel discussion. And we have students from Vermont come in and provide some insights too. From my perspective, this was the best one yet. Thank you for your support and allowing for us to open our doors and to be seen and to practice being a national leader in the work particularly around diversity, equity, and inclusion. I appreciate y'all. That was fun. And then finally, you know, there's, that's not as family as in the room tonight, y'all. And I want to say thank you for being here. And Beth, Beth, well, he, a few months ago, Beth earned tenure as educator for inclusion. And, you know, not when I was working in Virginia, in the Commonwealth. When this notion of tenure, when I heard that people got tenure, they would just stay in the job. I thought that's what people would do when they got tenure. They would stay in that job and be comfortable. How wrong was I? Beth got tenure a few months ago and applied for another job shortly thereafter. And Beth is going to be transitioning into the associate principal at Northeast Elementary School. Beth, for some folks in the room, you've seen, you you know Beth as a student. She was one of the best students to ever come through here. Don't let Lily know I said that, but she's one of the best students to ever come through the different city school district. And then, you know, frankly, I I've been in her classroom. She was one of the best teachers I've ever seen in the space. I aspire to be an elementary teacher like a Beth Snyder. And then I've seen her as an administrator and she is one of the best administrators in New York State. And we're fortunate to have her here and we're fortunate that she is on her leadership journey, taking on multiple opportunities as she's developing her toolkit, even after earning tenure in one of them. So Beth, thank you. Congratulations to you and your family. We look forward to working with you in your new role. That's it for my comments tonight, Professor.
I see in addition to, you know, the wonderful meals that we get as big board members for volunteer work, we every now and then are blessed with a reading homework.
Yeah, you know, I was going to get to that at some point. Joe Feldman was here and again, having Joe Feldman in person was something. Joe Feldman's book is one that many educators across the country are using and I have a copy for everyone. And, you know, as as I do with my class and some of the folks who know this, I don't assign particular chapters and sections to read. We will talk about the book in this whole and I will look forward to your feedback as you as you know, our high school has read this now and some other schools have taken this on as a community read. I've read it a few times. If you do nothing more than just read the first couple of chapters that unpack the history of grading and why we grade the way in which we do and how the ways in which we've been grading traditionally over a hundred years has contributed to the inequities we say we want to eradicate. We graded this way for a reason in the past and that was to sort and select and to exclude. And Joe, in his book and on the stage this past week, helps us understand how what we've done has been, has always been wrong. And he presents a new approach to grading and assessment that will produce equity and access and better achievement results for everybody. Not just those who have been traditionally marginalized in our school. So and again, I'm not Joe Feldman. I think I did that better than he did on stage. But anyway, I do wish for you to receive this and I look forward to the conversations we'll have about the book.
I thought it was great that Dr. Brown said I don't assign reading, but make sure you read the first couple of checks. We'll grab those on our. Fantastic.
And will we be graded?
Everybody get finished.
Will there be a quiz?
I'm not grading y'all. Let me be clear.
Qualitative feedback. Moving on to our agenda, we are tabled at the reorganization meeting a conversation about advisory councils. I know some board members received emails from us discussing advisory councils. At this point in time, this is listed as a discussion item. At any point in time, we can move to do something that's much more concrete or make a plan to have things in place on next week's agenda as well. But you do see there are three possible advisory councils listed below. But I will step back and see if folks have suggestions, recommendations, comments they want to say, anything about the establishment of any possible advisory councils for the twenty-three, twenty-four academic year.
First draft effort on some of the thoughts I've been having about you can call it climate change or environmental sustainability or a green council or committee, whatever we want to call it. And the additional one is some response to many of our conversations about mental health, student mental health in the district and where we are and where we might be headed and what we should be doing about it. So I would, I'm eager to see both of these councils slash committees in place. In my draft, I strongly recommended that they be put into place for one year and then reassessed after we take a look at the recommendations that we get from those committees. I have some really specific suggestions for possible community members, as I'm sure others of will, of you will have when you think more about the charge to the committee, but those, what I propose there are drafts and I expect people to work them over and add what they, what else they think is important and correct my grammar and whatever else needs to be done. But I, it's my experience that getting things out there for people to look at moves things along more quickly than just saying we should do this sometimes. That's why, that's why it's there.
I only changed the punctuation, Jill. It wasn't.
Fair enough.
Additional thoughts, questions, additions?
I just, I really appreciate that you took the time to do this because, as you say, it moves things along when somebody, you know, gets it going in this way and we have something specific to look at, yeah. So I guess, you know, based on Sean responded that we don't have a policy for establishing ad hoc committees. We do have a policy for establishing advisory councils. So looking at the draft, you know, would we just change ad hoc committee to advisory council?
I, I didn't find anything that indicated that an advisory council per se gave specifics about membership, for example.
The only specifics it gave was that the superintendent has discretion to appoint people.
Yeah.
And I would be certain that that would happen in collaboration with the board.
Right.
Right.
For this superintendent.
I, so I would certainly accept that as a friendly amendment between to go forward with the drafts, draft resolutions that I had either tonight or some other time to change ad hoc to advisory council.
My suggested path moving forward would be for us to decide which of these we think something that we want to do to wordsmith between now and next week and put them on the agenda for the special meeting for folks that are there. So we could get a committee established before the start of the academic year. But it would give us some time to do, we were to remove membership, for example, but write the charge. And there were two, I think, your version and my version both overlapped around mental well-being or advisory council mental well-being, though my suggestion was that we also focus on a suicide prevention.
I actually had, that was in mine as well. On the same page.
So we're, we're going to adjust membership so that it's not a required, since it's not a policy, it's not a requirement for board members to participate in an advisory council.
No, in fact, there's no requirement that any board member participate in an advisory council, though all board members are open to volunteer and all board members are open to participate, whether they've been appointed or not.
And are we, and I guess since it's going to the superintendent to do the review to just assess and make sure what's current staff are involved in this, because especially with the, is it the climate or the sustainability? What is it called? Climate Change Advisory, which is the sustainability group that we've heard of the GOAT, we've heard of elementary schools doing things and all. And so that there's consistency that we've connected with all parties involved, just like with mental health well-being that we're connecting with the staff, people involved.
And the mental health is a great one because there's a number of community and district folks who are already doing a number who have been doing this work for the past year. And so what it would do is provide a space for the board to get connected and to bring some other folks in on the same page. So I would be in support of both of those. I understand the need for legislative advocacy that may be a little bit more hectic, but it's different considering advisor council. And I'm, and I'm looking at Eldred only because he was the last board member to serve on the legislative patterns. You and Anna together.
It's, um. Okay, so Betty Rose.
Okay. So Betty Rosa had her whole executive staff speak at the NISBA conference. Uh, Maureen and I were both there. And Sean was the first time. It seemed like they were us up there. They were speaking our language. Um, they were talking about kids first. They were talking about equity. They were talking about qualitative and quantitative, um. Uh, ways to view our kids and there are a lot of things that Albany is going to have to push in order to support that. So. Now maybe the best time ever to have that committee up and running. Having said all that. Who's going to be down to take trips to Albany with me? It's not something I can handle alone.
I would dare say that's the question behind Karen's question. Is the division of labor and, and what would you be doing with any one of these advisory councils is most likely adding additional work for board members. Many of us are going to be doing this work in different ways anyway. So just be a different way to go about it. But it would mean additional meetings, additional, and I should also say that board members do not have to chair advisory councils. It could be chaired by somebody outside of the board.
I, I would certainly make a pitch for having at least one board member on each advisory council, if not more, because. Pragmatically, I think we run a much better chance of getting recommendations that the board can actually turn into. Policy or practice rather than, um, with people who don't know what, what the board's, um. Responsibilities are and whatever limits are.
And then it's just, just so folks know, that's been our practice, the, the past three advisory councils. One was student code of conduct that was co-chaired by myself and Dr. Anne Burns Thomas from SUNY Cortland. The last one was early childhood development, which I believe was co-chaired by Anne Riken and Eldred and local community folks. And then we had another one that was on the capital improvement project. Uh, that was co-chaired by a board member and the community member as well. So what they historically have been is, is co-chaired by one board member and a community member or staff personnel. So I guess the, the dialogue or the question is, do board members generally agree that these are advisory councils that we want to. Put on an agenda to take an actual vote on once we tighten the language, put a resolution together. The charge has already been set for each of them. The, the policy does say that doesn't need to have a charge and to Jill's point, the policy says that they will only run for a single year.
I'll reach out to Anne and see if she's willing to, uh, come back to help lead the charge on legislative.
I was having the same thought.
I think I could do it, but she actually. Probably would, would be willing to vote for it.
Yeah. I mean, and even before she ran for the board was doing significant legislative advocacy around the gap elimination adjustment.
And I should also mention, we have another huge advantage in that regard. Ann Callis has already stepped up for education. Leo Webb's two main urban areas now are Bennington and Ithaca. So she's a state senator, not now.
Yeah.
And sometimes they may even come to us. I know we need to go to Albany, but sometimes are like, so unless I'm hearing objections from the board. I'll work with individual board members to put together language around these three advisory councils. Again. The superintendent will be in charge with help from board and input from board members about what that could look like. And we could sort of proceed from there.
Well, before we proceed, I'd like a caveat that one of the board members is backing. So who will be running with each of these, like as we continue discussion via email and all. Cause I don't want it to go forth unless someone is backing it.
I agree.
I'll back, uh, mental health.
I'm assuming you're gonna back climate change.
More than happy to, unless someone wants to fight me for it.
It doesn't mean, again, other board members couldn't join on.
Right, right.
But you'd be agreeing to serve on that committee, Adam, if I, if I'm understanding correctly, right? And you'd be, and Eldred, you'd be willing to. Serve on the legislative advocacy. I'll try to get a format that is uniform for all of them. Put some language out there, we'll be in contact and if it works, then we'll put them on the agenda for next week to vote along with our personnel report.
Thank you.
And if there are any other additional feedback, feel free to send it via email to all board members. Fantastic, fantastic. Uh, the next item, agenda, item twelve point two. Um, is a discussion of flying the Hottoshonni flag along with the United Six Flag at district buildings. Um, this is something, uh, that I brought to facilities. We had a small conversation at facilities. Uh, Jill had a great idea that this was a larger board conversation. Quick background, uh, we have a Hottoshonni student who, um, approached me at the end of. Uh, social justice week, um, last, this past spring. Appreciative of everything that we were saying, um, but then also asking why we don't, uh, take actions that give meaning to our words. And their, um, ask was as a Hottoshonni student, why, um, if you're on my land, as they were saying, why aren't we flying my flag? Uh, I said, I'd bring it to the board for a discussion and conversation. Again, it's listed as a discussion. There is no action today. It's just to bring it to the board. Your thoughts, reactions, directions, things we should consider, um, anything of that nature.
Yes, one question I would have is, um, and I mean, I'm totally in favor of it, but just a question I have would be the scope. Like, would we have this flag any place we have an American flag? And it's interesting, there is not an American flag in this room, I believe. And I noticed in Culp the other day, we have the American flag and the New York state flag in color.
The student was specifically referring to Ithaca High School. There is already a flag, a second flag pole. Uh, at the high school grounds, um, that sometimes you, sometimes not. Uh, but I think that they were going to, but I think the question you're asking more is for us to, to discuss. That I haven't gotten down that far. Uh, I was looking at some of the legalities of it, looking at some of, as Elder and I have been having some conversations about some of the. Um, national, uh, the Hottoshonni nation internal politics, um, and what would that mean? What, what, so there's a lot to be discussed, but before even going down that path. Uh, wanted it on an agenda for to get the feel of the board. If there's something that we should explore in more depth. And I also need to respond back to this student because they have responded to me.
My, I, I'll, I'll, um. I'll inhabit the ignorant person on this one and. My first thought is I have a pet peeve against flag pollution. Uh, every time I, I look at city hall, I wince when I see all the flags flying there and I think. When do a bunch of flags mean nothing, you know, um. And maybe my, my personal preference would be no flags. I, I don't know. My other thought was that if what we want to do is, is honor the original inhabitants of this land. Uh, one possibility would be some sort of plaque or, you know, monuments rather than a flag. But that's, that's just an idea and I'm, I'm willing to be educated further on it. I, uh. I do get nervous about. One person asking for a flag that's going to fly every day for the next however many years and, and. That's my, these are my disjointed thoughts on the matter.
Any other board members thoughts, reactions?
In the community now, there's a. Hello? It's on? Mic check, mic check. In the, in a lot of other places in the community, the conversation has gone beyond token acknowledgement in a form of symbols. Right? Other conversations are now. Um, trying to figure out what that means. How will we support the members of that nation who are still here? Right? There are still living people here who are struggling. And they've been questioning me and some of my other roles about, you know, basically keep your flags, keep your speeches, keep your, your, uh. Beginning of meetings unless you're actually planning to do something. So. That may be a viable conversation in addition to this inter-political tribal conflict. What will it actually mean for us? We are a massive institution just down with a lot of weight, a lot of resources. How will we engage?
I should say in my other capacity, that's, yes, in fact, when I was at college, I had a conversation with some. Of the local tribal leaders who were very clear, uh, if you want to do something, uh, their comment to me was, uh, get land back.
Well, you could do that.
And I think part of their idea was, I think their idea was also sort of symbolic. They, they didn't care what the land was, but if you want to take an action. What they were trying to stress upon me as Ithaca College has been engaging in a land acknowledgement statement, to Elder's point. Keep your statement, give us some land back. That was the, that was the conversation. That was a little deeper. So. Again, there's a lot here and I don't want us to spend the rest of our entire meeting having, but I didn't know if this is something that the board would like for me to. Engage in more research or if this is something that we're not even considering, right? Like, I guess that's where it. That's where it is.
I would appreciate more research just so we don't end up doing something performative. So when they're saying actions, like what can we do? What are the actions at our disposal that would prove more meaningful?
What I understand, some of the traditional hunting grounds were at the South Tip, usually. And I've always wondered if we're sitting. Right? Where's it through the pot? So more research for sure.
I hope it's not one twelve first street.
So I, I'll do more research. One of the things that I will recommend and another capacity, I mean. Uh, the history center, uh, Kurt Jordan, a faculty member at Cornell University has just written. Uh, an extremely informative book on the history of the Hottoshonni. Um, and sort of has been granted, uh, approval by the local nation that it's a worthwhile book to read and that is a difficult thing to do. Uh, so one of the things I can do is ask the history center if all board members can get a copy of that book as well. As part of our thinking about what to do more, and I agree, um, I don't want to engage in anything that's performative. Um, I got. We all got too much time on our plate to do something like that.
Same time, if this is a student who's a member of that nation and that is their request, there's way to that as well, right? And even if we memorialize it in plaque that, you know, we originally flew this flag at the request of, of, you know, an Ithaca City School District student, you know. Who found it meaningful.
And I think the student maybe had, may have been a spokesperson, right? I don't think they were speaking as an individual. I think they were.
And, and even to acknowledge and commend this student for approaching you on behalf of the rest of us. Because it started with a group of students, how we have, um, State Street renamed Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. So it may take one to rally round to get the others. So we have to validate this student for coming forth and to. Bring the awareness and where I'd like us to, if we're getting the book for the board member. We need to get that on our list and within our school district and within the high school as part of our reading program. Just like how we started probably two years ago with the African-American studies course. And there are certain things that we need to update within our curriculum as we look forward to doing that. So. I commend this student for taking the bold step to bring this to our attention.
I do know the book was read by the two teach, social studies teachers who came and presented to us. Um, they, they, one. Dr. Jordan comes into their class, but they also assigned that one, I guess. All right. I think I have a path forward. Do some more research. Look at the book. We'll have some more conversations. And if anyone else is doing any other research or seeing other school districts have done as well, it'd be helpful for us to consider. So if you see an eclipse come up, um, just make sure you send it my way. Is that a path forward? Fantastic. Um, the next agenda item is a discussion of committee updates and structure. We have done this over my, I'm embarrassed to say, over my fifteen years on the board, we have done this in a variety of different. Venues and approaches and mediums. Certainly times have changed since two thousand eight in terms of how we use technology. But the idea is that not all board members attend all committees and yet still need to know the information that happened at the committee. And most recently, what we've been doing is once a month, we will put, um, committee updates on the agenda. And the chair of the committee would provide the board and sometimes the community in this format of. What were the major things that happened at the committee? We didn't know if that's the way which the board wants to continue. Was that effective? Was it efficient? Are there other ways in which we may be able to share information? Our communication team started putting out their own updates, uh, last year as well, which tried to capture. And think like a two-page document of what took place, if that was helpful. But entertaining ideas about what folks think we may do or how best to make sure people get the information that happens at committee meetings. Above and beyond watching the video.
Well, it seemed to be last year, didn't we at least sometimes, um, have half of the committees report at one meeting? And the other half reported in another meeting.
Yes.
Uh, which, you know, has a certain efficiency because if it's all the committees, it could. Take up a chunk of time.
It was a half all on her agenda easily.
We've also had, we've also had the executive staff come and present to the full board. Once we reach a certain level, critical mass in our, in the, in a particular committee about a particular item that's important. Like a finance update we do, right? Or update on learning forward, right?
So maybe we're too early in the sem- in the semester. I'm already there. Semester had started. Uh, maybe we're too early to engage in this conversation and the idea would be for the time being. That we continue having committee updates, half and half, as well as asking our communication team to continue to send out the summaries. And we can always bring this question back up if folks find there's a more efficient way or a better way to share information. Cause that's partly what it is. A lot of information comes our way at a very fast pace.
And, uh, two committees have met, uh, recently, last week, human resources and policy. Um, and in both cases, all of the, the members were in attendance. Uh, so we elected a chair in each case, me. Thanks, Jill. Yes. Um, and then just, you know, quickly in, uh, in policy, there were a bunch of policies we looked at. And, uh, all of them need further work. So our next meeting, uh, we will, they will be brought, brought back. And, uh, so the full board won't be seeing them yet for a little while. And, uh, and then in HR, uh, kind of gave, um, uh. Katie and. Yeah. Uh, uh, well Jill knew, but Katie particularly, um, you know, being new to it, we kind of tried to give her an overview of what we do in. In HR and, um, our approaches to it. And then, uh, both Katie and I had been at, um, the, uh. Leadership and education event in Albany the previous week, uh, sponsored by NISBA. So we gave a kind of update on some of the things that we had to do that were relevant to human resources, particularly to. Uh, issues of, of recruitment and retention.
Um, we did put our committee assignments, um, on the agenda as well. Those will be going out. I'm sure folks will start asking now. We've updated the website already, if not, we will. Fantastic. We have. And folks know, um, the board president is considered to be an ex-official member of all committees. Uh, last year we did not do that because we are eight members. And so, uh, I was on a couple of committees. Uh, I will do my best to attend, um, as many committees as I possibly can. That's my, that's my promise.
But especially policy.
But especially policy. That was hard to let go. That was, that was hard to let go. All right. Fantastic. We'll move forward there. Keeping with our agenda, we have three athletic mergers, um, to, uh, review. We. Do folks need any information about how we engage in that athletic mergers with other school districts? Do you? Do folks need any information about how we engage in athletic mergers with other school districts, do you feel? That we're, we're good? Fantastic, so we'll entertain. Uh, motion for twelve point four.
Okay, uh, motion to approve merger with Lansing Central School for Girls Hockey. Ice hockey. We don't have field.
We do not have field hockey. And we.
Second.
Was that you, Adam? Uh, moved by Maureen, seconded by Adam, any discussion, question?
We, we have girls hockey or we don't?
We have girls ice hockey, I was saying we don't have field hockey, which, in my day, that's what girls played.
Uh, all in favor? Unanimous, it's Eldred. Uh, entertain motions for twelve point five.
Motion to approve athletic merger with Truemansburg Central School District for Varsity Wrestling for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Again.
Moved by Maureen, seconded by Katie. Uh, questions, discussion, conversation?
Yeah, I don't know if anyone here knows this, but how would that work, would, would Truemansburg? Would we go to Truemansburg, would they come to us?
They come to us.
Because we're bigger or because it's our?
It's their joining.
Okay.
Yep, and uh. They would be joining the Ithaca team, and one of the policies that are in place, uh, of athletic merger happens, but at no point in time does it displace any ICSD student. So it only happens when there's space for a team, and oftentimes. Girls hockey is a great example, we had needed to merge with other districts to be able to fuel the team.
Right.
So, but yeah, but, and then. The modified, we'll talk about, um, we don't usually have cuts at the modified level, so that's why we do a merger at the modified level. Additional questions? Hearing none, all in favor? That passes unanimously, Eldred is not in agreement, great. And then um, our last agenda item is uh, twelve point six.
I'm on a roll. I move to approve merger with Elizabeth Ann Cloone Montessori Schools for uh. Twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year for all modified programs, grade seven and eight.
Second.
Uh, moved by Maureen, seconded by Adam. Discussion, questions, yes.
I presume since, you know, Samantha has recommended this, or looked at this, like, um. So that must mean that our modified programs aren't always overfilled if we're willing. I'm actually.
Yeah, there's space, um, we've done this one, I think, every year since I've been here.
Oh, I wasn't aware of that.
Every year since I've been here as well.
Because of staffing situations, there were cuts in track and field this year. There were a lot of cuts.
For modified?
Yeah, for modified, for modified, excuse me.
Uh, because of coaches.
I don't. I think that there was a lot of discussion, a lot of, I don't have, I don't have clarity on exactly.
And I'm not sure, we did a merger last year for this particular sport, I mean, we've done it periodically. Yeah, I gotta go back and check to see.
Well, I mean, under the, the terms of the merger, uh, if. There are going to be cuts.
It wouldn't have been an ICSD student.
Students, then, no, uh, no person, no student from another school would be on the team in place of somebody.
Right.
Uh, from our.
It may have been cut, but it wouldn't have been a cut of an ICSD student in a Montessori student state.
Exactly, it wouldn't.
That's my part, but I will confirm.
Additional questions, discussion?
There are cuts in soccer too.
Modified, yeah.
Just so we know.
Sure, but it wouldn't.
I know, no, no, it doesn't affect this, but just so there's clarity, there, there are still cuts in modified in several sports.
We have hundreds this year.
Everyone's feeling some sport age.
Wait till we get to Peter, we'll see what happens.
Well, one point, one time where there were cuts in modified sport, a principal then took a group of students to. Um, just continue that sport going on during that time.
Cool, and I know that there, Samantha's trying to look at. Inter, like organizing intermural options, organizing other options for those so that they, you know, students can participate at various levels.
This makes me think of the issue with New Roots. Um, and is that, I mean, that's also a public school, could they do a merger with us and ask to be part of our athletic teams?
We had an answer to this, and I don't want to miss. Quote, our attorneys. Um, because this question has come up before, about whether or not they could. Merge, and if I'm not mistaken. Um, I think the board would have to vote. To allow for them to merge as well, like we're doing here, but I think it's technically possible.
Okay.
But I'm, for anyone who's listening at home and want to play back this tape, I'm not certain, in this case, I will need to check, it's been a few years.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
It allows me, it allows me to change.
New Roots is not its own school, New Roots is its own district.
Yes.
My answer is it's own.
Okay.
I get it, it's considered to be a school district. So we'll follow up on that question. Hearing no other questions, discussion, we call the question, all in favor? And that is everyone including Eldred. And uh, with that, uh. We have um, meetings coming up next week, I hope board members um, got what we're talking about between facilities and finance. Next Tuesday, we will have a special voting meeting to keep our uh, personnel report moving, and we'll add the advisory. Um, committees, and um, it should be a very quick meeting for the special voting meeting. And with that, um.
Oh, let me add one of, let me remind people that we're gonna do a little tour, our, our beginning tour of facilities.
Oh, when did that?
Of the district. Uh, you should, you should have gone your email today, and um, we're gonna start on Saturday morning. At nine.
You're being serious on a Saturday morning?
Yes, because we've got a lot of facilities to tour.
And I unfortunately will not be able to.
Can, can we discuss that at the facilities committee?
Uh, sure, but that'll be after the tour. Um, it will, it's not gonna be one tour, it's, we're gonna have a whole bunch of them because we've got a lot of facilities.
Okay.
But, um, are we starting this Saturday?
Yes. Yeah, we're.
I don't think we should.
Oh, it's next, sorry.
Oh, okay.
I lost, I lost track of.
It's not this Saturday?
I didn't receive any.
Back to nineteen.
No, no, it's, it's certainly for everyone.
Well, I'm glad, then I can show up.
Yeah.
I don't know that I got.
I misspoke, I thought it was this Saturday, I've lost.
Cause I love Saturday.
Next step.
And this will be discussed at next week's facilities committee. Facilities committee members to agree on if we're doing a weekend activity like this.
Talking about it.
Uh, with that, we're gonna bring the meeting to a close, we'll discuss that facilities, thank you all for your time this evening. We'll see you.